Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Abington's Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, June 8, 2017. And may we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
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 Here. May everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Stephen Kalanowski for a presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucker. Good evening, everyone. Come on up, guys. I had to bring a cheat sheet with me to remember all their names. Joseph, Link, Daniel, Thomas, Seamus, and Eamon? Eamon, got it. I'm going to throw this over to Kenny Clark to tell a quick story about these brave young boys and what they did in Ward 6 on my street on Hazel Avenue. So, go ahead, Ken.
First, if I could, call up Deputy Chief Tom McInnany from Edsville Fire Company, and also John Rohr from the Fire Marshal's Office. Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. On Monday, May 15, 2017, a group of young citizens were playing basketball on Hazel Avenue in North Hills when they noticed a fire on the front side of a neighboring home. And I believe Commissioner Kalanowski introduced the young fellows. These six young men initiated immediate action, some knocking on windows of the home to alert the lone female resident, while others utilized their cellphones to call 911 for help. And the remaining group ran to their home on Hamill Avenue to alert their parents to assist. The quick action of these young men in responding to the beginning stage of the fire prevented further growth of the fire and destruction of property, as well as provided for the safety of the resident. With the fire growing next to the front door, this exit would have quickly become blocked, possibly trapping the resident. As it was, the resident was safely evacuated, and the fire extinguished with only minor damage to the siding and the porch light. When faced with a challenging situation, these young men made the correct decisions and took decisive action that resulted in a positive outcome for the resident. The Abington Township Board of Commissioners commend these six young men on their successful efforts. Their actions touch the lives of the residents on Hazel Avenue and will inspire others to act responsibly in a similar situation.
Tom, would you like to say something? Or would you like to read the plaque for me?
I'll read the plaque.
Each one of you received a combination for all the great jobs you did.
Certificate of Commendation presented to Daniel Kelly. We, the Board of Commissioners of Abington Township, would like to honor you for your heroic deed. On Monday, May 15, 2017, while playing basketball on Hazel Avenue, you and your friends observed flames next to the front door of your neighboring home. Your quick actions resulted in the safe evacuation of a lone resident and a reduction in damage to the property. The potential for a significant fire and personal injuries were prevented by your immediate actions. You are truly a hero, and your community is immensely proud. This 8th day of June, 2017.
One of yous, all of yous? Would you like to give your parents who are here?
So, without my parents, I wouldn't be here. So, thanks, my mom and my dad.
So, also, on top of that, I'd like to give each one of you a gift card to Rita's Water Ice from CAP, Citizens and Police Together, because we like to really recognize citizenship in Abington Township. And thank you for coming out, and thanks to the Board of Commissioners for allowing you to do this. Appreciate it.
On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we thank the parents of the young men for their heroic actions taken on Hazel Avenue in North Hills. Thank you very much for attending.
Wow.
Thank you, Chief Clark.
You're welcome, Commissioner.
Commissioner Kalanowski, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Fine job.
At this time, I'd like to call on Chief Livinggood for the swearing-in.
Thank you, President Lucker. Tonight, we will officially swear-in three new lieutenants for our police department. Lieutenants Porter, Fink, and Quinn represent the best of the best in our department and have already proven themselves very capable leaders, administrators, supervisors, and police officers. They represent the future leadership of our department, and I can tell you that the future is extremely bright for the department with the addition of these three new lieutenants to our command staff and team. Before they are sworn in, I'd like to tell you a little bit about each of them. So, I would call Lieutenant Chris Porter. Please come to the forefront. Chris Porter resides in Warrington Township. He has 25 years of service with Abington Police Department, having been hired in 1992. He's currently a member of the Patrol Division, has spent his entire career there. He promoted to Sergeant in 2010. Special assignments, and this is almost too big of a list to read, but member of the Tactical Team for 21 years, Certified Police Cyclist Instructor, Dare Instructor for 20 years, Range Instructor, member of the Montgomery County Drug Task Force, Field Training Officer for 14 years, and supervised the Field Training Officer Program for four years. With Chris Porter tonight is his wife Susan, his children Lauren and Colin. If you remain there, Chris, please, and Steve Fink, please come up. Steve Fink was born and raised in Abington Township. He graduated from Abington High School, and he currently resides in Upper Moreland. He has 26 years of service of Abington Police Department, hired in 1991. He has 10 years as a patrol officer, he served as an FTO, Field Training Officer, and a Dare Officer. He has 10 years as a patrol sergeant, he also supervised the first Abington Police Department Anti-Crime Team. Steve was a detective sergeant for six years, and in that role, he supervised the Special Investigations Unit, the Juvenile Detectives, the DEA Detective, and Montgomery County Drug Task Force. He was also the liaison with Abington School District. He served 23 years on the Abington Police Department Tactical Unit, finishing as the team leader. And I can tell you, it was Steve Fink that I handpicked to succeed me as the commanding officer of the Detective Division. With Steve tonight is his wife Christina and his children Rachel and Max. Ed Quinn, please join them. Ed resides in Abington Township. He's 21 years of service at Abington Police Department, having been hired in 1995. Spent 14 years as a patrol officer, four years as a patrol sergeant. His special assignments include Field Training Officer for eight years, Tactical Team for 15 years, and a member of the Montgomery County Drug Task Force. I can also tell you that Steve spent a few years, or Ed spent a few years in detectives, was extremely proficient in that role, and when he got promotion to Sergeant, it was kind of bittersweet. I hated to see him go, but I was happy for him and the department because he's going to be an excellent leader in our future. With Ed tonight is his wife Karen, children Kaitlyn and Matthew. And with that, I would call on the Honorable Judge Gail Wahlheimer to come up and do the swearing-in, please.
Thank you, Chief. Before conducting the swearing-in, because Abington is my home, I'm going to take a point of personal privilege and make some comments. When I was both on the Board of Commissioners and now as a judge, I get to see regularly the police department here in Abington. They not only keep us safe, but as exemplified by the three men being promoted to lieutenant tonight, they choose good people who are here in our community. I knew Lieutenant, or soon to be Lieutenant Fink, for a long time as our children have played sports together. I know him to be a good man, and when he asked me to attend the swearing-in, I wanted to learn more about the other men that would be joining him. Your chief told me about each of you. You exemplify the best that is in Abington. We are fortunate to have you all, and it is my extreme pleasure to swear you in tonight. With that, we are going to share one Bible, and have you all come forward. Please place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Chris Porter.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws.
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States.
The United States.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Township of Abington.
And the Township of Abington.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a Lieutenant for Abington Township.
As a Lieutenant for Abington Township.
And will obey the rules and regulations.
And will obey the rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
Governing all sworn members.
Governing all sworn members.
Of the Abington Township Police Department.
Of the Abington Township Police Department.
Congratulations, lieutenants. And Chief, at this time, I believe you were going to have their...
That's correct. So, we will have the pinning-on of the badges now, and we'll start with Lieutenant Porter and his wife Susan is going to pin the badge on Lieutenant Porter. Carefully. Lieutenant Fink, his wife Christina, will pin the badge on. And for Lieutenant Quinn, his wife Karen will pin the badge on. Gentlemen, is there anything you want to say?
Chief Kelly's here. Former Lieutenant, former Chief, Carl Knott, Mike Gallagher, Chief Gallagher, all our friends and family, my extended family that traveled some distance to come here, so appreciate the support, all the colleagues in the back there. Thank you, and we appreciate the opportunity, and thank you, members of the Board of Commissioners.
I'd also like to thank everybody for coming. Thank you to the Board of Commissioners. I'd like to thank my dad for being here tonight, and he's a big part of the reason why I've been able to achieve what I have, and my wife, who, again, is also a very big reason for my success. My children, Matthew and Caitlyn, thank you for being so patient for the three months of our lives that I spent burying those books, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners of Abington. It's a pleasure and an honor to work in Abington. And a lot of my mentors in this room, Chief Livinggood, former Chief Bill Kelly, Carl Knott, Mike Gallagher, and others, and of course, my family, my lovely wife, my lovely daughter Rachel, my son Max, my goddaughter Madison, my sister-in-law Julie, my mother-in-law, my best buddy Fred, and Oprah. Thanks for coming. Thanks.
At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Stephen Kalanowski for a presentation by the Land State Landscape Architect Firm of Simone Y. Collins. Did I get the pronunciation correct?
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having me tonight. A couple of years ago, Simone Y. Collins was awarded the Bicycle Master Plan for Abington Township. And during that study, which was a wonderful study, really a lot of great input from the Commissioners and the Township all around, there were a lot of issues that came up that really weren't part of that study. So, Abington was able to win a grant, and we were able to go and address a lot of those issues, and we did the Walk, Park, Train, Abington Report. Reports are at the Township. They will be on the website here shortly, if not already. And what we did, we looked at other transportation components. We were looking at pedestrian, other bike routes, automotive, and just the infrastructure within the Township. One of the things we really want to do is just inventory all the transportation infrastructure within the Township. We also wanted to enhance pedestrian and bicycle mobility to the transportation centers and the communities' centers such as parks and schools within the Township. With doing that, we really wanted to take advantage of the BNP, Best Management Practices. Look what we could do with the stormwater. You know, it's areas that we would want to keep green, where we can put infiltration basins in. In doing so, part of the things that we did within this project, we did a sidewalk inventory map, and that was really one of the big things that came out of the Bicycle Master Plan. People wanted to know why we couldn't get sidewalks in certain areas, and we found out there really wasn't a good sidewalk map. So, what we did, we went around and inventoried all the sidewalks. We took a look at where the gaps were. We assessed the gaps, where they could connect to schools, where they could connect to parks. Then we started looking at intersection improvements, and how could we enhance certain intersections in which, you know, we could connect to the transportation hubs, being all the SEPTA stations. Then we started looking with SEPTA, along with SEPTA, what we could do to increase more parking, what we could do to allow more mobility, more mobility to the SEPTA stations. In doing so, we started to take a look at the zoning and transportation-oriented design opportunities within the Township. Another aspect that we started was a draft official map. It is an ongoing process, but we really wanted to get that ball rolling, that too had come about from the Bicycle Master Plan. In doing so, we created a draft report. Draft report has been recently done, hot off the presses, delivered tonight, and we've had really just a good public input. It's one of those projects where if it's not really negative, it doesn't get a lot of people, but the people that we had come were just filled with just great ideas and really good input, along with the Commissioners that have, you know, been coming to our meetings regularly, including Montgomery County. With that, in order to keep the time down, I would like to answer any questions, or we can go over the presentation in more detail.
Any questions from Commissioners? Any from staff? Yes, Commissioner Myers.
Hi. You had mentioned that you're also looking for more parking at some of the stations, specifically Crestmont Station. Do you see the potential for more parking there?
Yes, we were able to look at it and shoehorn some more parking spaces in there. It is very tiny, but SEPTA does have a lot of land within there that is not being utilized. We would have to, you know, take some waivers because the setbacks wouldn't be quite there in order to squeeze them all in, but yeah, we felt that we could squeeze them in, and if you take a look at the map, there's a small plan of it in here. There's a lot more detail with that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, just to further along, some of the stations we looked at and said, you know what? We're not going to, you know, redo all this work. There's been many studies on some stations, whereas other stations were a little bit more neglected, Crestmont being one of them, and so we looked at it with more detail and really just came up with nice little designs for those.
A question. If anyone has any questions in the future, I see you have a very diverse project committee here. Who should the questions be directed to? Commissioner Klein or Township Manager?
They can actually come to Simone Y. Collins directly. They will be up on the website. We will take all questions, phone calls, and if you can, CC as many people at the firm, and we get back to everyone that contacts us.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Klein.
What kind of funding streams do you see coming up for some of the implementation of any of these alterations or changes to these train stations?
That's one of my boss's, you know, his forte. He's really good at it, but there are grants out there. We haven't gotten to that quite yet, but he would be able to better answer that.
Is that part of the study? Towards the end, you'll start to identify potential funding streams for some of these projects? Thank you.
I have a question. Have you prioritized which project deserves the most attention, which station deserves the most attention?
No, we didn't prioritize. It's one of those situations where you would look at it and we'd say, yeah, that's a really good project, but with grants, you usually try to find a project that fits that grant funding, so it's really, as much as you can prioritize, you never know really what's going to become available.
And the grant funding, who would be initiating the grants or applying for the grants?
Usually, it's the Township that looks at it. In one case, for the grant, for this, the Township hired us to put the grant together for that, and we were able to successfully secure the funding for this project.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Commissioners Oppone.
Yeah, have you, excuse me, have you had any meetings with SEPTA yet on this stuff?
Yes, we did. They were really receptive, and this was a dynamic project. Normally, SEPTA would want to do something, but Abington really was able to get ahead of the curve and start, you know, initiating SEPTA to, you know, take a look at this, you know, in more detail. Because as we all know, SEPTA's understaffed, and sometimes it's hard to get the ball rolling with these.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioner Kalanowski?
So, I think this is great. Two train stations affect where my ward is, I guess, Ardsley and North Hills. And I see where in North Hills, you're talking about the intersection, and Ed, we've already worked on a grant, which is, hopefully, that'll be great. So, how do you see walkways being improved in those areas? Because it's big. I probably have 30 people just in my close neighborhood that walk to the Ardsley Train Station, and that's one of the biggest complaints, is the walkways trying to get to that train station with the traffic and the lights and things like that.
Right. Ardsley is nice that it does have a good sidewalk network in there, but we do want to enhance it with better crosswalks. The crosswalks there now are just, they're not very distinguished, you can't really see where they are. They need to be enhanced. North Hills, that is a really wonderful community, but it's old, and that one cross street there, the cross corner is actually shorter than crossing the street like you should properly. So, I know that that has been redesigned with McMahon Associates.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Harper.
This looks terrific, so I appreciate you sharing this with us tonight. Wanted to ask a follow-up question about the conversations with SEPTA and whether they have, at this point, involved any discussions about shared investment in these improvements. One of the challenges we had with the multimodal grant that we did receive a year or two ago related to Crestmont Train Station was there was a significant matching portion on the part of the Township, and those dollars were initially to be directed to improve SEPTA's property, but they didn't have any financial stake in the project.
Yeah, I personally couldn't really get into the details of that because I just don't know them well enough to answer it, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. It's an important consideration as we move forward.
Commissioner Schreiber. Thank you.
Bouncing off all those SEPTA questions, and you may not know the answer to this either, but SEPTA had planned to improve some of the train stations. I know Commissioner Oppone, you met with them or talked to them at one point about Roslin. Did they mention what the timeline is now on making those improvements to the train stations themselves?
They did mention, I don't recall the exact dates, but they were mentioning the dates, you know, which ones they were looking at to enhance. I'm sorry, I don't really recall those details.
So, they're still on the timeline somewhere.
Yes.
It keeps getting pushed back.
If anyone has any questions, we actually have, Liz Smith is on the Economic Development Committee, who's the planner for SEPTA, and if you just want to email me the questions, I'll ask. June 15, we have a meeting, I'll just kind of talk to her about it beforehand.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Mr. President?
This is a non-SEPTA-related question.
To echo the sentiment of the other Commissioners, this looks fantastic. I admit I've not gotten through all 206 pages yet, but what I've gotten through thus far, I'm very impressed with. So far, I've only seen a couple of peripheral mentions of the notion of a bike share. And I know since, you know, obviously, Simone Y. Collins is, you know, the Bike Master Plan designers, I was wondering if you, if there's any sort of, you know, vision you might be able to articulate about a hypothetical way forward as far as having, really establishing a bike share in Abington, either as a standalone or more likely in conjunction maybe with Penn State, Abington, SEPTA, et cetera?
Yes, private entities often are really taking over the bike share, just because they have been able to, you know, capitalize on that market and do a really good job. Bike shares weren't really part of this project, but they've always been mentioned, even the Bike Master Plan. People like the idea of it. We have looked at it and haven't seen the need quite yet. It's definitely building. We see more people mentioning it at our meetings. So, it's something that a third-party company would want to take a look at and further study to see if it would, you know, be profitable for everyone.
Thank you. Any other questions for Commissioners? Commissioner Gillespie.
Thank you. Just on the Roslin Station, how do you decide? I have a block in my ward that does not have sidewalks either side of the road, and they could easily walk to Roslin Station, and I'm just, it's not, it's in the weight section here. It's not on the map. So, how do you decide?
We do not decide where they are. We were just inventorying them, and what we looked at were gaps for, such as parks or transportation hubs and schools, because, you know, walking school is a big thing. So, it really would be up to the Commissioners and the Township to, you know, prioritize those missing sidewalks, but yeah, there are some gaps that really need to be addressed.
Because this would, that would affect both. That would affect Copper Beach and the train station.
Right, yeah. Copper Beach, we all know, it's just got a huge, complex network of, you know, schools and sidewalks in there, and there are some pretty substantial gaps that should be...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Commissioners? If not, any from staff?
Yes, private entities often are really taking over the bike share, just because they have been able to, you know, capitalize on that market and do a really good job. Bike shares weren't really part of this project, but they've always been mentioned, even the Bike Master Plan. People like the idea of it. We have looked at it and haven't seen the need quite yet. It's definitely building. We see more people mentioning it at our meetings. So it's something that a third-party company would want to take a look at and further study to see if it would, you know, be profitable for everyone.
Thank you.
Any other questions for commissioners? Commissioner Gillespie.
Thank you. Just on the Roslin Station, how do you decide? I have a block in my ward that does not have sidewalks either side of the road, and they could easily walk to Roslin Station. And I'm just, it's not, it's in the wait section here. It's not on the map. So how do you decide?
We do not decide where they are. We were just inventorying them, and what we looked at were gaps for, such as parks or transportation hubs and schools, because, you know, walking school is a big thing. So it really would be up to the commissioners and the township to, you know, prioritize those missing sidewalks. But yeah, there are some gaps that really need to be addressed.
Because this would, that would affect both. That would affect Copper Beach and the train station.
Right, yeah.
No sidewalk.
Copper Beach, we all know, it's just got a huge, complex network of, you know, schools and sidewalks in there, and there are some pretty substantial gaps that should be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? If not, any from staff? All right, certainly, thank you very much for that presentation. I don't think we're, this, right, this is, this is an agenda item, so I'll ask for public comment soon as, are you finished, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, good.
This way, Mrs. Lehman. All right, thank you very much, sir. At this time, I'd like to call on Vice President Stephen Klein for approval of the minutes.
The gentleman was about to leave.
There'll be a moment for you to, just sit down, please.
Couldn't I ask a question before he leaves?
No, you'll be allowed to speak in about two minutes. Just relax.
And if he was gone, that would be okay with you?
He's going to stay right there.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for a special board of commissioners meeting on May 3rd, 2017, and a board of commissioners meeting on May 11th, 2017, and I so move.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. At this time, we'll call on public comment on agenda items only. So Mrs. Lehman, if the gentleman is kind enough to stay to answer a question, I would consider this an agenda item because it was a presentation, but your question.
I did ask him to stay. He was about to leave because he gave his presentation. So an accommodation can be made for that, Commissioner Luker, and that's what we're asking.
Right, but you never asked for it ahead of time. That's the ground rules.
Well, you saw me ask for it when I saw the situation.
You're wasting time, Mrs. Lehman. Miss Lehman, you're eating up your three minutes. Ask your question, please.
Unbelievable, unbelievable. Okay, so you need to fix some of these things that are broken, and that's broken. That's just a complete lack of accommodation to help something go forward. My question for the gentleman was about the Meadowbrook Train Station and the fact that the Meadowbrook Train Station actually has plenty of room for parking, but it's not laid out properly. And there's parts of it where, I don't know, I spoke to Mr. Michelau, he was going to call SEPTA, where people were actually sort of falling off the cliff, and people didn't want to park there, so that was problematic, too. But the train station itself has plenty of room, so I just wanted to ask if he could just address that Meadowbrook Train Station as he addressed the other ones.
You're free to come up and speak, sir.
Meadowbrook, out of all the stations, we probably spent the most time on. Meadowbrook is a very unique situation in which there is SEPTA parking and various other parking there that we kind of, we labeled it creative parking. People were parking wherever they could find a spot. So what we did was we proposed a plan to formalize it and try to increase the parking as much as possible, because that's one of the stations that is auto-centric. It has a lot of automotive traffic going to it, more so than any of the other stations, really in comparison to the pedestrian and the bicycle users. So, you know, we really did go into quite detail, a lot of detail. So if you look at the report, we have a rendered plan of what's proposed there and a formalizing it and helping the traffic patterns, and also trying to keep it a little bit more safe to the other roads. Yeah, that is, no problem.
Okay, that answers your question? Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, and it's Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. So my agenda item comment, I just have one. Sway Meyer is our new open records officer, and I appreciate that. We're, I have found her to be one of the more cooperative and easy to work with people when there's a problem, often it's fixed, so, or addressed politely, and I think that we're going to have a change. You should know that in the past, there was a great deal of not getting documents that should have been put out. And one of the things that I found in my right-to-know for the right-to-knows was the very first thing I had, was a whole handful of documents that I did not receive when I put in my right-to-know request. They were kind of taken from my hands, and I was told that they were, they were under, they were because we were under investigation, and so I couldn't have those. Well, there is an appropriate path for that. When I had the right-to-know answered, it should have said, certain documents are being withheld for this reason, and it gives the actual number and the reason, and that would be because of an ongoing investigation. So that did not happen, neither the first time nor the second time, okay? So hopefully, I'm going to, I was pleased to have a meeting with Mr. Manfredi, I appreciated that very much, and with Ms. Waymeyer, and I anticipate a new way forward, and I hope that we will not have any more of that kind of stuff. And when somebody makes a mistake, admitting it, and actually, and so we had actually some back and forth about not admitting that there was a mistake here. So that's the kind of thing that can get fixed easily and things can go more smoothly. I trust they're going to at this point, so I was grateful for that. I also want to say, for the first time, somebody asked me, what are the things that are problematic? Now, they didn't give me much time originally to list them, so that's why I was grateful for this meeting, which lasted over an hour, and I was grateful for that. There is certainly more that we still have to address, okay? But that was the first time in 11 years that somebody actually asked that.
Thank you.
Okay? So I'm hoping more of you will ask that and that you will find out what the issues are. Most of them, a lot of them, you know, because you've heard them here, and let's get them fixed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public on agenda items only? If there are none, we'll move right into our formal agenda, and I'll call on Commissioner Tom Hacker, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, President Luker. The Public Works Committee has two items for consideration this evening. The first is PW1. This is a motion to authorize $100,000 to be expensed from the permanent improvement fund balance for milling purposes, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you. And PW2, this is a motion to approve the MS4 stormwater plan for Abington Township, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you, President Luker. That concludes our business.
Thank you, Commissioner Hacker. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Ben Sanchez, Director of Code Enforcement and Land Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. At this time, we'll move to the Public Safety Committee and call on Commissioner Lori Schreiber, Director.
Thank you, President Luker. PS1 is a motion to appoint candidate Lee Yochem from the Certified Civil Service Eligibility List to the position of probationary police officer, provided he successfully completes the background, physical, and psychological tests and all entry requirements of the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission for Act 120 Training. Appointment will be effective July 5th, 2017, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? If there are none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
PS2 is a motion to appoint candidate Ryan Hossara from the Certified Civil Service Eligibility List to the position of probationary police officer, provided he successfully completes the background, physical, and psychological tests and all entry requirements of the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission for Act 120 Training. Appointment will be effective July 5th, 2017, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff? If there are none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
And PS3 is a motion to promote Officer Jennifer Doyle to the rank of probationary sergeant, effective June 9th, 2017, provided she successfully completes the remaining portions of the promotional process, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Comments from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
And PS4 has been removed from the agenda this evening. We will be rescheduling that at a future meeting date when we have gathered some additional information, and so that concludes our agenda this evening.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. At this time, Commissioner John Spiegelman, Director of Public Affairs.
I have a question. Commissioner Oppone has a question? Is this on the firemen, the?
Yeah.
So we're going to delay that for?
There is no, there is no clock on that. We're anticipating, meeting with the Fire Board, Fire Chiefs are setting that up right now. I would expect it to come back probably in September.
Okay, thank you.
And there's a process to go through.
Thank you. Commissioner Spiegelman, before you proceed with Public Affairs, Commissioner Schreiber has a comment on public safety.
This is actually on Public Affairs, if you don't mind.
Better still.
So first of all, this is something that we've been working on for quite a while, and I'm very pleased to make this announcement. And I also want to thank a couple people before I make the announcement, particularly Director Van Struther, who worked very hard on this, along with Director Andy Oles, our manager, helped pull some of the pieces together here, and Commissioner Kalanowski and Commissioner Luker and I have worked very hard on getting this done, so I'm very happy about this. But to go ahead with the announcement, the Township of Abington is pleased to announce a summer youth meal program. This program provides free lunch meals to any child from the age of 1-year-old to the age of 18. This federally funded program will start on Monday, June 19th, 2017. It will be Monday through Friday, and it will end Friday, August 18th, 2017. Meals will be provided at Crestmont Park, which is located directly across the street from Willow Grove Mall. The program site will be operating near the Old Welsh Road Park entrance next to the Township pool. Registration is required, and registration forms can be obtained at the Township Building and at the two Township libraries, starting next Wednesday, June 14th. At that time also, we'll have some additional information of the exact time for the meals. Registration for this program is required. So we will be having more information coming out to all the commissioners for the various newsletters, but we wanted to make sure that that information started to get out to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. At this time, we'll call on Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much, Commissioner Schreiber. Public Affairs has two items tonight. The first is PA1. This is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 17-018, appointment of Secretary Township Manager Richard J. Manfredi to the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Abington, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Comments from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
And item PA2, this is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 17-019, appointing Assistant Township Manager Tara Waymeyer as the Township's Open Records Officer in accordance with the right-to-know law, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Comments from commissioners? Comments from staff? If there are none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
Mr. President, that concludes the business of the Public Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. At this time, Vice President Stephen Klein, Director of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to call on Treasurer Jay Blumenthal for the Treasurer's Report this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. Good evening, everyone. For the month of May, deposited by the, into Republic Bank from the various departments, is a total of $5,230,644 compared to last year, $5,621,097. That's a decrease of $390,454. Year-to-date, we've collected $42,773,307 compared to last year of $41,759,412, with an increase of $1,001,389,5. As for the real estate taxes collected, the Tax Office deposited $513,930 with a year-to-date of $23,846,938. Balance to collect, $3262,857. As compared to May of last year, by the way, we have a decrease of $104,931. As a point of information, the last date that Township County taxes can be paid before penalty is next week, June 12th. Anytime after that will be in penalty period. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. FC1, motion to approve investments for the month of April as previously circulated to the Board. It was noted that investments for the month totaled $1,225,000. Interest rate yields ranged from 1.05% to 1.3%, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? From staff? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
FC2, motion to A, approve the April expenditures as previously circulated to the Board in the amount of $1,986,205.77, and salaries and wages in the amount of $1,769,082.68. And B, authorize the proper officials to sign vouchers in the payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of July 2017, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
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 Markman?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Boeman?
Yes.
Placido?
Yes.
Farron?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Keller?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Yes.
SC3, motion to approve the advance and travel expense activity for April 2017 as previously circulated to the Board. Advance and travel expense reports were $0.3310.47, respectively. Four-month expenses totaled $7,892.66, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Comments from commissioners? Comments from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
FC4, motion to approve the clearing fund, the deferred revenue expense activity and petty cash balances for the month of April as previously circulated to the Board. Clearing fund receipts and dispersments for the month of April 2017 were $18,746.35 and $19,833.30, respectively. Deferred revenue expense receipts and dispersments for the month of April 2017 were $1,252 and $2,475, respectively, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
FC5, motion to adopt Resolution Number 17-014, authorizing the disposition of certain finance office records as set forth in Exhibit A, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Comments from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
That completes the Finance Committee's agenda.
Thank you, Vice President Stephen Klein. That concludes our formal agenda, so at this time, I'll take public comment on non-agenda items. Public comment on non-agenda items, and please adhere to our three-minute speaking limit. Thank you.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. And actually, the agenda item is what sparked this question, the finance records. Like, when you put the disposition of certain, you know, when you're getting rid of the records, can you say what year they're from? I don't know if that 14 there means they're from 2014. What year are we disposing of here? How far back?
Exhibit A.
I'm sorry?
You have to refer to Exhibit A.
I don't know if that 14 there means they're from 2014. What, what year are we disposing of here? How far back?
Exhibit A.
I'm sorry?
You have to refer to Exhibit A. You can get that in Township Manager's Office.
Okay. Do you happen to know what?
Not offhand.
What it is? No?
He said not offhand. No.
Okay. So, one of the things in the disposal of the right-to-know records is I was actually shocked to see records from like 2014 being disposed of only three years later. Now, I understand there's copies of most all of those things, but I, I'd like to know what the, I think there's a disposal record somewhere. So, can I just get that, or do I have to do a right-to-know to get that? Or can somebody direct me to the, to the correct link?
Township files all the, all the required timeframes for documents to be held, and if you're requesting any specific documents, you could file a right-to-know with the, with the Assistant Township Manager's Office.
Yeah. I mean, it's really a matter of just sending me a link to help me find it in the government records. So, if somebody can do that, that's great. If not, I will file a right-to-know, and we will go through that whole process.
Once again, the proper course of action is to file a right-to-know with the Assistant Township Manager's Office, who is now the Open Records Officer.
Okay. All right. Very good. I will do that. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is that we had the little discussion about the manager's salary at the last thing, and I, and I said in our meeting, Mr. Manfredi said that he was, and, and I feel very certain he is going to put in more than 40 hours, and, and he knows it, and we know it, but his, his description said, "Well, if I get the job done in 20 hours, or 40 hours, or longer, I'm being paid for the job." But I think Abington residents are not happy about that mindset. We have a superintendent of schools who had four jobs and a salary of $350,000. Yeah, okay. And benefits that went, yeah, you have to understand that, okay?
Thank you.
And benefits that, that took it up to, to nearly half a million.
Well, we're in the township now.
So, when you have four jobs and you're being paid at that rate, that's offensive, okay? That's egregious and offensive. And we have plenty of people in the township who are paid very great amounts of money, some who are not doing their jobs, and, and some of whom are probably taking liberties that they should not take. And so, I'm saying, we would like to have a tight...
This is not an open season to criticize. If you have any comments like that, you can discuss it with the Township Manager.
Well, I would like to see, I, I have expressed these things again and again, okay? I think you've all even heard me say something about the Code Enforcement Department. Not one of you has said, "Please address that with me," okay? So, no matter where I try to address that, the door comes down, and it's not being addressed. So, my only recourse is to bring it here. So, if you don't want the criticisms here, then you need to actually fix them in the place where they should be fixed, where I first mentioned them, okay? One commissioner here sits in a committee where I've mentioned it, and he refuses to do anything about it.
Your three minutes are up. You want to wrap up this, the subject? Your three minutes are up.
I'm sorry?
Your three minutes are up.
Okay. So, Abington residents do not want that. They want accountability for the salaries.
We heard you loud and clear.
I'm sorry?
We heard you loud and clear. Thank you very much for your comments.
But will you do something about it?
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? Or non-agenda items? Okay? Hearing none? We'll start with comments from, closing comments from commissioners. I'll start with Commissioners of Pro.
Thank you. I guess everybody here is aware of the water main break that I had in my ward on 900 block of Edgehill Road. I just want to mention some people that were there from the Township, some thank-yous that I think are appropriate at this time. I want to start with Kenny Clark. He's the first one that called me. I was on my way home from work on the train. Jeff Glynn from the Fire Marshal's Office, John Rohr from the Fire Marshal's Office, Chief John Livinggood, Deputy Chief Pat Malloy, and your police officers that were there. Chief, thank them for me. Also from the Code Department, Larry Mateo and Mark. Pena Cow, they were going around to their individual homes. Also, Tom McInnany. He coordinated the whole thing. He kept me posted every hour. So, I just want to give a shout-out to them. And also, Ed Micheloe for sending the sweeper over there. So, as of right now, there was minimal damage, and Aqua is taking care of what they need to take care of, and the issue's been taken care of at this time. But it just goes to show you how everybody in this township has pulled together when an incident, a disaster, or emergency happens, and gets the job done. So, thank you all very much for that.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couldn't have said it better about what, what happened than Commissioner Zepone just did. It was, it was an outstanding effort, and also, as well, kudos to Commissioner Zepone for, for his actions on behalf of, of the, those Ward 9 residents. We have a lot of, lot of recycling, environmental events coming up in the next month. This Saturday is EAC's Last Rain Barrel Workshop of the Spring. It's happening at the Public Safety Training Facility on Florrie Lane. It's this Saturday, June 10, at 10:00 a.m. And then, basically, there's something, every weekend after that, there's anything with the plug recycling at the public, at the Public Works Facility on June 17. Following that, the County Household Hazardous Waste Collection, the only one in Abington Township the whole year, is happening on June 24 at the Junior High, and then following that, on July 1, also at the Junior High, also a county collection. Tires. Bring your old tires. I just want to say, congratulations to Lieutenants Porter, Fink, and Quinn, and Happy Father's Day to, to all the, the dads of every, of every type and kind in Ward 11 and throughout Abington Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. No comments this evening from me.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rothman.
Thank you, President Lucre. Two events that I'd like to mention, and some are reminders for the public. St. Basil's, our friends over there, having their second annual carnival, June 21 to 24, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on the 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, and on that Sunday, it'll be from 4:00 p.m. till 10:00 p.m. I'd also like to thank Kelly Warner of the Police Department and Samantha at St. Basil's for working to address multiple concerns that the neighbors had brought to my attention. It looks like everything's all set there. July 4th, we'll be here way faster than I think anyone of us expected this year. The weather certainly threw me for a loop. July 4th at 9:00 a.m. is the McKinley Fire Parade. So, come on over to the fire station, 9:00 a.m. Join myself and various other commissioners and the wonderful volunteers from that, the Fire Department that morning, again, 9:00 a.m. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Commissioner Martin.
Thank you. Besides flooding, one of the worst things that can happen to a homeowner is a sewer backup. And I'd like to thank George, your department. We experienced a sewer backup, not, not only my constituents, but my next-door neighbors in Twinbrooks where, where I live, in the building that I live, and they were very grateful that your department came out immediately and instructed a plumber exactly what to do. They, they found the backup. And Mike, your, Scott in your office was very helpful in helping us locate what they call the clean-out valve. Do I have that right? And that, that made an obvious difference as soon as they opened it up. So, what could have been really bad affected two homeowners, but certainly could have affected a lot of, a lot more in that small area. So, we're very grateful, and on behalf of Twinbrooks, we want to, we want to thank both the Engineering Department and George, your staff in particular. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Michael Markman.
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lori Schreiber.
We have our 12th Annual Roslyn Pet Fair coming up this Saturday from, it's extended hours from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We're going to have some new things there this year. We're going to have somebody doing nail clipping for animals. We have Riviera Pizza's going to have lunch for people there. We have a caricaturist who's going to do pet caricatures. So, that's a new thing. And we have all the rescues, raffles throughout the day, all the proceeds help local animal rescues. So, come there, 10 to, oh, it's at the Church of the Living Word. Forgot to mention where it was. Church of the Living Word this Saturday, 10 to 2. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Commissioner Tom Bowman.
Just thanks to Ed Micheloe and his wife and the other members of the Roslyn Day Committee that put on a good, good, good event last Saturday, good weather, thank God, and a very good job by Ed, and thanks.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner DePosito.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Rothman, I think you forgot to mention that you were on hot dog duty for the parade. We ordered about 450 of them.
Hot dog bun duty.
Oh, okay. Just checking. I just want, one quick and similar comment. School's almost out, so please, when you're driving through Abington Township, drive like your kids live here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Jimmy. Commissioner Tom Farron.
Thank you, President Lucre. A couple things, I'll try to be quick. I want to echo Commissioner Spiegelman's, congratulations to the newly promoted officers, well-deserved all around. I want to echo or jump off of Commissioner Rothman's comments about the parade. The Great Glen Side Parade is at 4 o'clock. You can find it starting, essentially, the main intersection will be Eastern Road and Jenkentown, and going down South Eastern Road, starting at 4:00 p.m. on July 4. And there's a variety of activities that you can find going on throughout the course of the day. I want to thank the staff. I've had a lot of interactions for the, over the past month, better or worse, from their point of view, from the, the managers' offices, the fire, and the police department. So, thank you to everybody with whom I've been working. Very much appreciated. This weekend, we have a lot of things going on. We have the Run with Pride event Saturday morning, which is a scholarship fundraiser, and we're very much looking forward to that 5K race. We have the 21st Annual Glen Side Gardens Yard Sale taking place from 9 to 1 o'clock, so go run your 5K, and then go get some deals in Glen Side Gardens. We have the June FET taking place Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at the Abington Hospital. And importantly, I want to make a note of the Just Fight Foundation. They're having a fundraiser. As everybody remembers, Ally Turner had that series since then a couple years ago. She's doing very, very well. She's very stable, and the Just Fight Foundation has been working over the past year to start to spread that, that sense of comfort to families outward. And before I go any further, I wanted to just kind of make a public welcome to Commissioner DePosito. I've been fortunate to be on the Just Fight Board for the past year or so, and we recently welcomed Commissioner DePosito to serve on the Board as well. So, I just want to welcome him, officially thank him for volunteering for that. And on June 14, Wednesday night, at Roberts Block, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., there is going to be a fundraiser. No entry fee whatsoever. It's just one of those situations where a percentage of your bill will be donated back. So, I'd like to encourage everybody to come out. There's going to be celebrity bartending. There's going to be some games going on, so 6:00 to 10:00 on June 14 at Roberts Block by the train station. And I think it's in your ward, right? No. No, that's in, that's technically in Cheltenham. Technically in Cheltenham. It's a weird situation, right next to Commissioner Glesby's ward, but Roberts Block, June 14, 6 to 10 p.m. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Farron. Commissioner Glesby.
Thank you. I just will touch on what you already mentioned, the Greater Glen Side Patriotic Association, 4th of July event. I can't believe it's here. It does start with children's program in the morning at 10:00 a.m. at Renninger Park. Then we have the parade at 4. You can go home and have your picnic, and fireworks in the evening. So, it is a great day with many, many people there. So, hope to see you there. And I just want to mention one thing. Did you have your coffee with a cup yet? Was that, wasn't that in Spiegelman's ward?
Yeah, we had it, we had it last Saturday, and it was very nice.
And you forgot to mention that. See? So, it went well?
It went, it went, it did go well. I actually didn't know, I had forgotten it was happening till the last minute, and it would, no, it went, it went great. It was really good. It was a kitchen bar, great hosts.
Okay. And congratulations to all the new lieutenants. It's, it's really wonderful. It was great to see some guys I've known from way back, so it was really nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Glesby. Commissioner Heckar.
Thank you, President Lucre. I have a few acknowledgements I want to make this evening. The first involves a member of our community who fulfills multiple roles for the township, and this is Michael Jones, who is an employee of the Highways Department and the Abington, is the chief of the Abington Fire Company. I received a phone call from a resident approximately two weeks ago who lives in Brentwood, and this was during the time when the roads were being repaved, and they look great, by the way. Thank you for that. This resident has a special needs child who has, has arrangements every day for transportation, get back and forth to school, and on this particular day, there were challenges because the road was being paved, it was blocked, and the bus was having a difficult time getting up and down the road. And Michael Jones literally picked the child up and brought her into the bus and was able to navigate the bus down the street with the driver to ensure that the child was safe and that they got off to school okay. And, you know, we deal a lot here with challenges and problems, but it's these little things that actually matter to residents that we don't always hear about, so I just wanted to acknowledge Michael and the fine work that the public works and the highways crews do. So, thank you. Additionally, I wanted to offer my congratulations to the lieutenants who were promoted tonight. I had had a chance to know each of them. In particular, Lieutenant Quinn is a neighbor of mine, lives on Maplewood Avenue. He's an outstanding person, a wonderful father, a great neighbor, and very proud to see him get promoted. Tonight was a good night for Ward 10. Officer Doyle, soon-to-be Sergeant Doyle, I think Commissioner Spiegelman and I compete to be her number-one greatest fan. She is an incredible asset to our community, and I'm just pleased to watch her career progress. I also want to thank the Police Department today, and in particular, Deputy Chief Pat Malloy. There was a situation involving the safety of a youngster at Overlook Elementary this morning who had gone missing, and Deputy Chief Malloy had kept me involved throughout the morning, and fortunately, it was a good outcome, no harm done. But those kinds of events can be gripping for both the school and the surrounding community. And once again, Chief, the police handled that expertly, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Heckar. Commissioner Kalanowski.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucre. First of all, I'd like to congratulate my sons Nicholas and Daniel. They'll both be graduating on Wednesday night from Abington Senior High. I'd like to congratulate all the class of 2017. I'd like to congratulate the boys that were here tonight, and thank John Rohr back there and Kenny Clark for keeping us informed on the things that are going on in their neighborhood.